Yeah, yeah. Big emotions. From October seventeen twenty twenty.
All group.
Yes.
So we're gonna jump to, let's do number five.
Yeah.
We, I can, I can report a little bit. Sergeant, you know, is even getting very many complaints that. That a lot of the structure, the supermoculay, it's it's rates, car areas, industry. Over and, you know, a couple things, some things we need. And, you think, in the ordinance, that that would be credit to Sergeant Paulus. That would restrict the use of streets regarding these rates.
What happens?
So. It talks about, if I recall without reading, but, talks about defining size of the, there is. And parking on residential streets. Yes, so, so we made, made it, the idea or the basis of it was people in residential areas are getting objected because there's a lot of oversized vehicles. And it's not just, trying to close rapid traffic, it's oversized vehicles, it's car haulers. Uh, it's, it's duly trucks with extra large trailer with construction equipment, commercial plates on it, proportion plates. Um, and yes, I understand that people need to be in town, that live here, that, that need sleep time or downtime. But there also has to be a debt, and in between, they know when they get a CBL, they get a trucker's license. Then it isn't easy for you to park in some places, even if you invite your family, it's not that easy. Um, a lot of other cities have enacted the exact same thing, the kind that we have here. So it's based on the zoning map, it's currently in place, so if you're in a, in a residential area, you're not able to park. Um, so I sprint off our general zoning map, but the zoning map pretty much covers outlines exactly that isn't, isn't residential versus what's commercial industrial. So it still allows them to park in anything that's commercial industrial, but keeps them off the residential streets, especially when it comes to parking overnight. It does allow for, obviously, service to be rendered, if there's construction or something like that, allows it to be, to be on the roadway, there are exemptions, again, nothing's set in stone. Zoning currently has oversized vehicles already in place, convenience driveways. We're just expanding that now to go to these streets as well. Um, and it, and it outlines specifically what we're looking at, people with Porsche plates, commercial plates, oversized trucks, trailers, um, those type of things. Uh, which is why we encompassed the other separate ordinance, that unattached trailers on the street. Right now, that's a whole separate piece, but it's really just the short term of its order in place. Uh, it's really kind of encompassing, there's a lot of people that are becoming frustrated and upset with the fact they look out their house and they see seven trailers. I myself, we experienced a lot of calls for service, we go out, we find where truck and trailers parked on the street. We locate the order, so if he's parked on Kenny Street for the next two days, it goes a tight one to lock that thing that we have now. It's not like you're even, we're already walking this into your house, no, we just found a convenient place to park. That's, that's really not the reason, so you're putting someone else out that hasn't hoped outside and knew this for years, they're not in order.
How was that working at the, you know, at the parking ban, which starts on December first, then August first?
Is this what's giving this reading, it's giving us a little.
Yeah.
So they initially got a bunch of tickets, the guys came in, I explained to all the servants, they didn't tell us, there is where we're parking, you're gonna have to find something. Again, whether you get permission to drive property, I can't give you permission, as, as, you know, city entity, I can't give you permission to want someone else to drive their property parking lot. But we're gonna have to find drug lanes, they're not parking on the streets, I, where are they going, you, I don't know, not a hundred percent. But where do you want to pass pass down, that's a clear spot to park, Kenny Street or wherever the sidewalks are, hey, if we're off the main road, we're not on a state road. Wherever we can bend down, we'll move that down, all that, I just don't wanna see that continuously, we are starting to get oil and dirt, you know, again, they, they, petrol, it's starting to trickle itself up. But if it's not Kenny Street today, where are they going, they obviously still live in Portland, we have to write the parking rules, but they don't, they got this license. It's going to be difficult, and they need to have some sort of spot to be able to park, they're ready while they have that. Uh, it's kind of just enforcing that act, but it does give them some short term parking, if they need to, so it's not saying that you can't park on the street for any time for any reason. Um, it's, it's not free for all, so we're just trying to regulate it a little bit better, because we are, and I, we're getting so many complaints about autumn summer, especially this year, this summer. Um, even one of this, so there's a gentleman that owns a house up there and has a trucking company, runs concrete. He lives across the street, the top floor is on the other side, and he parks his driveway, kind of on the, it's a lazy kind of curve, it's not even a turn. Um, will be a complaint that he's parked there, it's not easy to see, it's not easy to get lots, bust, it, it, it does, it, it, yeah, it's really a problem, but well, it isn't. Because there's no established parking, there's not signs, because it's more than a few single vehicles, oversized vehicle, oversized road board trailer. No, it isn't, but I can't say with neural data parking.
We had a.
Is also established.
Oh, the neighbors on Kenny Street, actually, had a meeting with the mayor, and she sat down and discussed the possibilities of the ordinance, and. It's been quite a while since, uh, but this is what we're, we've kind of.
I looked at other avenues, I tried to find if it was every city property, we find, give them this an avenue, or we don't, let even park and say, hey, we'll give you a parking permit, because you live in town, you know, we'll, we'll get an offer of parking. It just isn't real estate, I would love to find them, I, I would, I would be more than happy to open up any type of conversations to give them these spots to be. Uh, I'm not, like, turning that away at all, I just can't find a compromise for them. But this is, this is something that we were hoping for, at least kind of help to regulate, there's a point for somebody seeing from a day, this is a, no problem. Because we started out with two, and now we had, I think, one, we had fourteen or sixteen trucks running all the way to Kenny Street, pretty much from Route Four, all the way almost to the front. Hey, that's, it's becoming excessive.
I live right in the street from there now, it's just Kenny Street, I see it all the time.
The road is plenty wide.
Yeah, that's why your park there is very wide.
It's very wide, and, and they're being kicked out of a lot of places, so that should be a swan indicator, because Walmart used to be one of the most friendly, and now it has become, they've all kicked out there.
Oh, really, they can't go to Walmart?
They can't go to Walmart anymore.
Those, I think, too.
Those, those got, uh, yeah, Walmart actually kicked them out because of liability issues, and asked for the certification of Walmart, because some hits have happened, not in the.
Yeah, somewhere else.
Somewhere else, they said, okay, listen, we have to stop this, we can't do this anymore, so, again, the nice ease, it's hard when you move on to business, it's cooperative.
Yeah, unless they rent, unless they rent the space from them, because then. And it's good, because that, you know, then you maybe have to, you know, provide some sort of insurance and all that stuff, so that they, so then the line zones up.
Like I said, if I could find a municipal property or a city property, wasn't being used, and you turn out, throw it down in gravel to make it.
Yeah.
A viable spot, I, I, more than that, it's just not. That's, they're like, they wanna be close to downtown, but also have luxury, you, you can't have everything, even if you park out, you're still gonna be arriving home, you'll stay home for the weekend, but it's not. And the nearest truck stop is Water, Waterstown? Or, Waterbury, I was gonna say.
Waterbury.
Waterbury, so again, Mountain Avenue is where your first truck stop, and that's not, I mean, it's a twenty minute ride. So, we're trying to find in between, I would love to give them a separate compromise of a location, but at this point, I just don't have. But we have to start to regulate it, if we're really inside control, right now, we're reaching that, that point where, at what point is it too far?
There may be some changes to this, even the, here, I'm sure there may.
I, I think there's.
Some people will show up and say, maybe.
I think there's gonna be open conversation, and I think that's not a bad thing, I think a dialogue should be good. But I think it does need to go as far as at least open for the public to be able to have a conversation about it. Uh, because I, you're definitely gonna see the Kenny Street residents, one of this, the residents that also don't agree with the fact that they have this big eighteen wheelers sitting next to their house.
Right.
Thank you.
So you said.
Oh, is there, this is a brand new one, so, so the towels that come in for.
Yes.
Sure, you, for like section.
Yeah, so it talks about, uh, so.
Who's the one that?
Actually, I'm here because it wasn't long apart, maybe over that restrictions, so it falls in, in the part, overnight.
Pardon me again?
Um, yes, yeah, yes, I'll double check, but yeah, I think that's why that ordinance number was, I believe I did. I hold.
Well, we'll put it in the right place, anyway, it's the right, it's to the point.
So one is responding to.
Oh, just a question of, of, you said we focused together, this, um, the, 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 of this ordinance, where did you find this?
So I used, I actually pulled three or four different towels, I pulled pieces from each, because some of them were just almost too much. Um, they were really restrictive, and I, again, the fact that you have a landscape trailer, that was sometimes, especially down on southern shores, towns. They, they don't even want you to have a combination plate with landscape trailer. Hey, overweight, you know, come on, that's not even reasonable, again, I'm getting a small short town, a small road, but we don't have that, we have a very big mixture of rural and urban area. So I, I didn't want to just encompass one specific town, so I think I pulled Manchester, who's a similar size, obviously more on population, but similar size, there was a Stanford piece.
There was Windsor.
There was Windsor. Yeah, so there was three or four different towns, like I, to at least find out they already had a place on them, and also, the important thing is consistent was that they can stick with mainly, um, using the zoning map. So they mainly specify the zoning, using that as their, their kind of template, to say, okay, if it falls within this template of, you know, industrial, commercial, or, or there. You can park in those places, anything that's this, this residential zone, then no, that wouldn't be acceptable. So that was at least one of the basis pieces, and then the expansion of what constitutes an oversized, overs, you know, overweight type vehicle. Um, you know, is it duly, is it not duly, no, just like that, in the last specifics.
We're talking about, make them gross, both kinds of models, how many can stand, is that, you know, type of landscape, top end trailer, is that all those?
A dump body, so you're talking a full size duly dump body truck and trailer, yes, you would be there, you, you would have to have a commercial license in order to operate these vehicles. But you would also need, as far as, uh. The truck and trailer with weight, would have to be a commercially licensed vehicle, or a registered vehicle. That, that's the key, so the fact that this bulk house doesn't necessarily say that is, that is the only piece. Uh, you would also have to add a commercial registered portion, most of them are usually going to be oversized and portioned, because it's cheaper. Um, and then, why do you include that within it? For the different type of restricted apartments, for portions, between trailers, combinations, commercials, so it does cover that, which you, you could include one of both in order to make it more less restricted. Like you said, a landscape trailer is something, I mean, twelve thousand pounds, you're talking about, even a good sized landscape trailer, fuelled axle, maybe? Eight thousand, maybe, and that's probably, portioned, that's probably absolutely loaded.
Yeah.
Um, and then you're still on about five fifty, let's say a five forty, five fifty, which isn't that the old weight, so you're still gonna be there. I, I think still, then, it's within reason, but now you turn around, now it's a commercial business, it's part of the residential area. So I wanted to turn our commercial, the people that live in town, most of them have separate building to store equipment, or a driveway. But now, this is a street, it shouldn't be a part of the street, it becomes a safety issue.
No, I think, so, that's, well, since, since.
Twenty three, thanks.
Yeah, I think you know. And but I think they try and, you know, try.
Yeah.
This is a fairly, like, properly.
Correct, it's not approaching, I mean, I want them more of a safety, or keep it those off the road, because, again, it's, it's just an oversized thing, it's about sight distance issues. You worry about dripping fluids that are dumping all over, if you try, it's Kenny, which I hate to use as an example, but it's not. But right now, it's, you'll see your spots or freeze coming from, you know, just hydraulic fluids, I think. Break fluids, you name it, there's a lot of things that come from trailers, just because there ain't so much usage, but do we want that on security?
So a couple things, one is, you know, the station, where did that?
That was out of Steenford, the border box, uh, which I went down, those are just types of registrations that are out there, a lot of them are out of states, so like portions, you know, kind of, portions for the most part. Also, these are Tennessee, high, but they are portions, those are your common ones, your major enclosed truck trailers, that are all made of portions.
So, Kim, I, I just, sometimes it's dangerous, the list, so.
So you're thinking.
I think the list, the land, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can draw up, and even, even open for discretion, at least for interpretation.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
So I think, gosh, literally, we'd like to, um, tax this, but, uh, it's all about, uh, taxes.
Right.
And then, it's, it.
My gosh, wow. But I just think, you know, I would like to take the list away, to the commercial, states. Commercial vehicles, that, like, this thing, that's high.
Well, but actually, taxes are over.
I know, it's, it's, I know, I, I'd take the whole list off.
When we go through the list, we see, uh, well, maybe, maybe we should think whole, then we can.
Once they're foreign.
Try to adjust it, to.
Or, yeah, such as, so that you can add to it.
Yeah, yeah.
So that the lead problems.
Yeah, that's your primary issue, so really, it's spinning, it's spinning in, in section A of that one, nine, three, three, one, so it talks about the sections of one to six, so it's height and weight. But that, in accordance with that, it also goes over schedule A, so it has to fit this first place area, and it also has to be registered under these guidelines. If it doesn't meet, meet one and two, then it doesn't technically fit. That's why it has combination there, because you could have a combination vehicle that you use primarily for, you know, uh, personal use, but then sometimes you use it for business. So I have a large dump truck and a trailer that I use on the side doing excavating, well, okay, if you park it out front of residents, and now you're a lot of side structures, search neighbors. Is that fair, when you have a side business, but it shouldn't be parked on the street, if you have a side business, it should be here, not on the property. But we use our street as, as the primary place to use your commercial vehicle, and that's kind of why, that's why the list was created. Um, again, sometimes it goes a little too far to stand for those, on a tax, okay, well, that's because, standing.
And you can be able to, that's, or, and we use the.
Yeah, you look at, yeah, yeah.
Too many tractors, farms, and the farm, is that?
I like registered S farm, so you get trucks that are oversized trucks that are in the S farm, because they have to be within a certain amount of mileage, uh, even, but again. Very rarely, you know, I mean, I see pickup trucks, but that's not gonna, that's not gonna be the first criteria of overweight, oversized, over.
Right, yeah.
True.
Yep.
So, um, I think we've had a discussion, so, let's say that, let's make some changes, maybe, uh.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah.
Good.
There's something that go along with this, it's really, I don't think it's this, there's the hellies and stuff like that go along with it.
It's not a towing, but.
Yeah. So that's organs, it's order of place.
Yeah.
So, right now, it's goofy, because organs just says, move me, so it doesn't really put the, fine, so, this is, all it's doing is putting fine. So the fact that, hey, you got an unattached trailer, that's extremely safe, half the ones we go up to don't have chocks up there, and so, I mean, literally, they're using the tongue as the chalk to keep moving. Which, almost like, I just, I can't, the life, you just can't, you don't put a collar on, and you don't.
Yeah.
I just parked this, this black trailer on the side of the road, and most of them drive into it, and then they just drive wet, and I don't have room like that. Okay, so we told it, do they learn, no, because that's met, so it's three months from now, because I don't have any room, but at the same time. So it just establishes, you gotta, we're not fine, that goes with it, and it's kind of, it's a city ordinance, my patients are part of, for, it's that. That's all.
So let's go, and I think they go first, then this, go before.
Yeah.
Again, this is, Sergeant, we did most of this, and we're suggesting that maybe we should start from scratch, if we have knowledge, maybe we should review current version of this, this food.
It's updating the language more than anything, right now, that's really open issue, but we have a lot of foreclosed homes, empty homes, uh, people just lingering, confusing. Typically, in the other sidewalk areas, downtown, we have a lot of walkers, who has been responsible to the movements? And how do we then absolutely pay for it, or put means on top, in order to have them accountable for these rules? Again, it doesn't come cheap, we as a city are just as responsible to remove, uh, snow from the sidewalks, so, you know, how do we hold these responsible? Really, that the ordinance that they told us is, yeah, we'll go there, but it doesn't say how, it doesn't say that there's a delay to the process. So this is kind of revamping it, bringing it back into, well, human language, um, saying that, you know, renters aren't solely responsible, because it's the landlord, it says, hey, listen, we sign, we surrender. It says that the renter is, that's different, but it needs to establish who's responsible to make sure that these sidewalks are here. The chief did have one, um, in the west, he asked that if you move from twenty four hours from a cessation of storm to thirty six hours. That's a little bit, just because, you know, some people that work evening shift or night shift, there's a sneeper in the day, the storm, whatever, it just.
So that it's good, yeah, it's about lower profit.
Exactly, so it gives you, it just gives you that extra half a day or so, you know, or just, you know, if somebody does work in off shift, okay, it doesn't give them reasonable amount of time to not go out there. Uh, and then with billing, as far as if we did, we would take all avenues to try to make contact, and send out manages, which we do now. Uh, if we can't reach the property car owner, then what happens? So now, we would take, as far as traffic revision, we'd take responsibility, we'd have our guys, well, clean it, and then they would get billed, if they do not pay the bill, then it gets eaten up. And then, after that, they turn around, they leave that property, they have to pay off, or they didn't take care of it.
So I'm just confused by.
So, this was, I, I actually been here, I, I read Manchester, so it just came in afternoon, it, it, it isn't a, it's an alternate term, if you have a disdainful individual. Or someone that is incapable of handling, they can't afford it, or they're going to come, hey, reach out, reach out, they need, you know, to assist you in something. Uh, Manchester had it in there, it were in there, my own means, it's, it's scratchable, it's more of a touchy feely volunteer, might be able to help out, but I already talked to, talked to new services, they said. Absolutely, if someone's in a hardship that needs a handle with clearing someone's sidewalk because of a, an extenuating circumstance.
Yeah.
Feel free to contact, they said, okay, it's not a guarantee, but does it give us an outlet that we're utilizing the community and, and their arrangements with it? So, it's up to you whether or not.
I don't like saying, you know, where you can sit down.
Identifying.
So I feel like, I would like to remove the entire site.
Okay.
Sure.
Like, who knows?
We could actually ask anybody.
Yeah, yeah, it's not just one specific person.
Yeah. You have the context of twelve hours down below, and thirty six hours. What says? They have to see the.
Which one?
Maybe.
So you want to take twenty four hours, thirty six hours. Actually, public works finds that beneficial, because, uh, crew staffing, uh, roads, primary, primary roads, we have a proto list. So I'm gonna, thirty six hours?
Again, it was a kind of more list with the chief, the chief was also medicating, he wanted that.
Where you looking, right?
So it's got twenty four hours, right after the storm.
Oh, oh, okay.
And then it says, within the space of twelve hours thereafter.
Thereafter, so it's twelve hours after the twenty four. As well, so it's a total of thirty six hours.
Total of thirty six hours, he just wanted to make sure the language was clear for you, to say thirty six hours, twelve, I think, it's, this is a more confusing way to say it, or just say thirty six hours, like.
Thirty seven.
At the end of the storm.
Yeah, at the end of the storm.
Yeah, take that.
That's better, yeah.
I'm just speaking in voice, you're talking.
Yeah, no, 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 you'll be all wrong. Yeah, I think, I think you're gonna find that that's confusing, too.
Yeah.
And twenty four hours, if the time of storm starts, but twelve hours after the storm ends.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a three day storm, which we, yeah, where it lingers on.
Yeah.
So, uh, can, can this one out, any other suggestions?
And D, you wanna say, say it then?
Shelby, you know, I have, can't think maybe.
This is the, this is the constant argument, because they say that you can put down cat litter, they say you can put down soda ash, they say you can put down ash.
Well, cat litter will make it slippery, so maybe.
It's miserable, like, it's horrible, but people say that that's a, as long as it's a safe.
You know, wood ash, that.
It would ash, yeah.
So why don't we just say sidewalks, Shelby, theater, and safe to pedestrians?
Yeah, somebody might say, and then, oh, then I gotta put down.
See, yeah, yeah. And you're in that, and.
Safe to pedestrians. And so, I miss, winters.
And shake for the pedestrian.
Yes. So, with this language again, that will.
We can then forget that.
Records.
Oh, that's, sorry, it's given, I'm fully.
It looks like.
We just had.
Yeah.
The right, pardon, penalties, yeah, the parking penalty is pretty much mirable as far as, so it goes back to the strict department, and the unattached trailers, but as far as, when we go back to the, the catalyst or something, that's. Oh, terrible number, as far as, I, I did mirror that off of, uh, what the standards were for, that did, pretty much random amounts, actually, they were a little bit more expensive. Uh, and Stanford, so like, financials and Twitter, all like that, they, they were close to thirty dollars.
Yeah.
That, yeah, we can't, we can't afford it, the city, yeah, I, I at least recommend it to the people.
Okay, so we got to, um, follow that, right? Oh, so we would just settle it, and then.
Yeah, 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 covered all.
Okay.
Good.
Right, you're on. So you're, well, but, I didn't, you can, exactly, sorry.
So kind of like, based on our last discussion, as far as to just kind of break it down, this is a full scale review, as we had to talk about. Did have one thing I did on the past, I was feeling, I don't. Did have one thing I did on the past, I was feeling I don't. Get anything for public comment, but you know, Tom Candifer, he kind of gave me some comments. You know, we count on Tom. I think that so. I don't think anything that is is substantially. Changed the contents, but. I'll review that. Um. So, you know, basically the name changes to more accurate, we're felt like industry uh. This ordinance was last updated in two thousand and three. So it's one plus of point years. Um so the industry has changed. Number two, as we discussed, all the definitions. Um are moved to the front of the article to eliminate confusion. And I think a lot of times, the comments are. When we moved them and add some, there were potentially some. Similar duplicates. So I think a little bit of that. Um additional provisions for possible litter and sidewalks to be kept clear, we we get kinds of. Particularly with the old ways, people following old ways on the sidewalks and that is. The pedestrian intent walking through the street around it. Kind of very similar to to removing some ice sidewalks. You know, they're they're not for storage. Vehicles are not for storage of solid waste. Um then four, establishing the enforcement mechanisms for violations, the articles. Uh establishing maximum contract periods for city contractors. Um you know, as you know. Um we went through a process, we had the contractors or we've had contractors for twenty plus years. So this limits to to um two five, your contract, maximum two five year contracts. Before the city then should should go out and bid for a contract. Again, one twenty eight A is instructions sidewalks and establishes time period when things can be placed curbside. Um so we can't leave your empty container out there, you know, one collection is on Thursday, we have vacation on Monday, let's say we. Take containers out there on Monday and they stay there all weekend, they stay there to go back from vacation. Right now, they those. Establishing that accurate that the containers can be ready for curbside. And then they have to. Sometimes with some people living out there on. Right, we get planes, we get, and then they'll get hit, then they have to be replaced, repaired. Recall that. Um then one twenty fifteen, just add some language clarifying what is scavenging. And then uh one twenty seventeen um. So the being, understanding that there's differences between ordinances, policies, and regulations. As the director shall. Promote uh rules and regulations. Relative to ordinance.
The scavenging. Sort of what we want with the state of this.
Well, you 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 do, you kind of do and you kind of don't, you know, if it's, there's a. That's that we had conversations about scavenging. But why you don't want somebody to scavenge and, you know, scavenge through it and there's wonderful activity, you know, what are they? Um what are they taking, you know, if somebody throws a hard drive. Right, recycling, which it shouldn't, it's like, but if somebody takes that or somebody takes something. You know, mail. Because it's been put in recycling. For recycling, if they didn't take it, they didn't take. Bad, because they had, you know, maybe they don't want to open the bag because they saw some cans in it. And it's got somebody's mail or something like that.
I think these larger things that's without it and if you take all.
Right, and you kind of want to almost, it's kind of you want to encourage that to some degree, then people put out furniture, so you got, you know. Somebody in town that goes around and collects old furniture. And refurbishes it, refurbishes it, and then, you know, resells it. Don't necessarily want to disturb that, one, it's doesn't, then it doesn't cost us because we paid by the tons, it doesn't cost, so it's just trying to find a a balance.
Right, and I think that doesn't give a happy medium, because in reality, is the owner making a complaint? Hey, there's some kind of rummage into my trash, okay, that person made a complaint, those moments, but if they're not complaining, but again, you have a gentleman who goes around and brings his biggest living for the last one years, let me guess. Yeah, that's just a rule of being psyched, that trash anyway, it's not gonna be sorted out, he's getting five steps back. He spends most of his day on bicycles, picking up cans and survives that way.
Right.
So I also want to deter that because that's just like, that's what I feel.
You you don't necessarily want to do that, but then there becomes.
Correct.
That's it, when he's in that one container.
Exactly, so.
Now that is specifically been set out by the owner. To.
Be compliance, if you complain to that.
You're on a complaint.
And we have had complaints, you go and address the gentleman, and you can stay away from this gentleman's thing, there's a scavenging law, we can't, we can't.
Currently there's no scavenging.
Um there's still, there is a scavenging.
There is.
And I think still have the apples that fell out. Yeah, still there, moving. So he's been there all the time.
Yeah, he's been here?
Yeah. It is a city. All it is, it may not be the same with refugees, but we actually have a scavenging law.
How?
It is a place.
Yes.
Yeah, fine, but it's fine, it's not the case where it is.
So that there is a balance when you want to encourage recycling.
Yeah, we're good for recycling, right?
I'd love it, but I would doubt it.
I put out like an old.
In the.
Dryer, hope somebody comes and takes it.
Yeah.
Right, for the amount, for the scrap.
Sure, take take you, if you're spending money, you go get it, protect the time and then go get it and and recycle it.
Thank you.
One less thing to accomplish, but like you said, I want person to identify information out here, yes, it shouldn't drop, it would be recycling, not shred. Or we can't guarantee that, and now we're saying, yeah, we can't free for life.
So the converse side of that is, you say you put a refrigerator out there, or you put air conditioner out there. And somebody wants to scout it, they take it, they think, okay, well, that's good. What are they doing with the free?
They're smacking it off and then draining it.
So it's free out, most likely it's getting drained to the atmosphere. Which is a leak compressor, which is building to. That's the gym that has to, the C S C's half. We got a guy down at the recycling center, he's down there collecting air conditioners, what are you doing with these? Right? And he had like ten in his truck. And made him unload every single one and put it back because. He said, well, I can recover the free, so you're not, you're not certified in public freedom. So those are, you know, that's the converse side of this. You you know, washer and dryer, great, take it, it's basically all metal. There's there's no hazardous material. Refrigerators, air conditioners, humidifiers, they have that material in. Which is hazardous and we want to be. Responsible in making sure that that material is recycled, because it is hazardous.
I know this is just a small section of much larger movements, but I think if you could just find a little more language that would. Fully discourage, maybe things that are hazardous. Or that they aren't allowed to go into the actual recycling in. Things that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely work on that and kind of refine just what that definition looks like. Yeah, I mean, you don't want people going into bins and.
Right.
But kind of like the walking waste stuff, you know, people collecting metals.
Right.
Where would we? Um, you know, when we get you to say. You know, scavenging any material that potentially poses that hazard to.
About dangerous materials?
Yeah, that's one of the hazards to the environment, such as free on. You know, you don't want.
Hazardous.
You know, you don't want somebody scavenging old. Um metal light fixtures that have ballast in. Because they have these, these balls have these. So, you know, if they just throw that out in water. Or even dump it in trash. It still poses an hazard.
So we're done.
Yeah.
I'm going to go to the fees or.
It's in the article for.
Yeah, sorry, babe.
There's the article for should be listed fees. That, that's one problem.
The idea was that it wasn't going to be established, that it would be established.
Yeah.
Because if we go down a specific.
Yeah.
It's right. Yeah.
So you remember, like, when we did it last year, we raised the container, reference container extra fee, extra charge. From one twenty five to two fifty. Because that's what it's costing us to handle to re- to move those containers.
Then we'd need to go through the city council.
Yes, every other fees and kind of like what we talked about, other city stacks, it would be presented. Some type of a. Budget season. To establish what the fees for the next fiscal year are or. And they don't have to be set in, I think it's the departments, seeing the order feels reasonable. It's kind of similar to your, you know, offensive, right? Looking at now, probably haven't been. Up the. Very long time.
No diff, no different than adjusting parking mirrors, you know, it's gonna come with apprehension and irritation, ultimately, is it reasonable for what's out there currently, it was the cost of makeup or maintenance and it was the cost of material. So it's, yeah, definitely should be like.
Yes, I mean, realistically, fees should cover the cost of whatever, whatever this, whatever.
Right.
Well, concerns.
Yeah, in my opinion, yes, I mean, I'm. I'm a believer that it's my trash, I own it, I should take it, get rid of it, but you know, it's. It really up to the city council to decide, you know, how they want, what fees they want to implement. What we've set forth is fees that you can.
So why don't, I'm just thinking. Out, this is like the fourth.
Yeah, I don't know that we talked about it four times, so. I think I think we tackled it the last time.
Thank you.
It did, yeah, it's were, we talked about it at least three times, maybe two and a half times.
Yeah.
And I understand it's a. It's a, it's a complicated one.
Yeah, it's very.
And just if you have a public hearing, yeah, you're gonna be looking at it in any, if you have a public hearing. I don't use that for public hearing and then look at it again.
And then we can always have another public hearing.
And then you can edit it, you know.
I was thinking of another strategy of just talking. I feel like we need to present a summary, what an important committee is that we're. Have an agenda, just.
For discussion.
Or even a presentation.
Okay.
Maybe presentation, discussion. You. Well, we actually could.
The fourth.
To make, yeah, so like, you know, that way, then we, you know, that we present a feedback or discussion that ordinance committee. Again. Then we go back to setting. I know it puts it out three or four months. Also, I have big ordinance. We could have a policy meeting, yeah, the next month or next week or.
The the next few weeks.
Yeah, and then see if, you know, if they'll make out, if there isn't, we'll always just. Push it to a board here. Yeah. My thing.
No, and I and I agree with you, councilwoman is. Um I want to get it right. So if it takes us longer to get it right.
Yeah.
Then I think that's, I agree, that's what we should do, it's kind of, I think we we need to get it right.
Because I think instead of public hearing. You know, the word, the council has had for me to. Let's find out.
Yeah, yeah.
But it. For the presentation.
Discussion, uh presentation, discussion.
Yeah, I think that your presentation, you're just saying. All right, so we have. Everything but the trees.
Trees. Forests.
Would I, this might be a. This is a brand new ordinance.
This one is just.
So I figured out, like, sort of, you need an eye in the whole council members. I just had a whole eye in it. A little more knowledge. So I think the same would be true for tree shrubs and. Guys.
Yeah, it's probably good idea. And um. You know, other council members are not aware of. Yeah, as much detail as we are, so probably a good idea to give them a view. What this is and why it is uh being presented.
We wanted to.
Yeah. Do you think that's feasible?
No, the mayor's agreeable.
Uh yeah, I mean, I would do the same thing for this one, which I hadn't done, which is just kind of create a little bit of an objective summary to kind of go with it, but I would. Present the, you know, entire ordinance as written. And I've been, I haven't gotten a lot of comment back on on this particular one, we haven't discussed it a lot. Um. So it might be a good venue to. Did it get additional input?
If it's so engaged, solid ways, we have to look at the trees.
Yes. Trees are not solid. Type of food they are, when they come down.
I am recycling later. There is a lot to it though, because you actually get a lot when it comes to uh trees in the body of white light, especially out of the ways. Uh I think we run into this a lot, especially in traffic, because we're constantly having to clear back sidelines from first line overweights. Um and again, we have an obligation to make sure that traveling, uh not being motorists are safe. And you know, how much responsibility will put on the landowner? Really, the tree is actually in the right way for the able to trim or move cut back so that it's safe for people to travel, but is the responsibility of the owner? If so, should a tree warden look at it before you go packing it to death and tree docks as a result of it? Um so I think that I see there is an importance to it.
Well, we've had that occur, there's somebody that has hacked a streetskate tree and has died. We've had people plant. Trees in right ways and they've gotten taken out by plows and then they want us to replace it. Didn't have the authority to plant that tree in the city right in the first place. There's a reason why we keep the red ones clear, and it is for.
Especially.
And rest and particular traffic is for safer safety.
Yes, decorative grass is a beauty, people look at it and they're great, especially loved people love it now, right by their mailbox. And you know, that's a perfect one, they just had to take it down to west, and then the landowner, like, hey. We understand it was really nice, you can fence over by its corner, but it's a struck from the view of the corner, right, you can go determine to the fairways, you couldn't, you couldn't see that. You know, blind form of that, because the grass was too tall.
And I can see what people say, but it's not.
They they whack them down, they kick them down the hall, so we didn't have to get them off, but again, it's to the right way, so they're technically not bothering. So it it gives them a little bit of comfort with the cost.
Yeah.
Their score.
And then, and I think like, how is it, it it. It does provide some there to residents as to. It does provide some clarity to residents as to. One, what can do in a way where it's regards to planners, but also where that responsibility lies. Now, if it exists, you know, it's. We, we get a lot of like, well, my neighbor's tree is overhanging in my yard, can you guys come and do something about it, council? Well, we don't have any authority by law to private property, we can't send your neighbor a letter and say, we might, we might look at it. I mean, it could be a hazard, and I think this can come in upon. This last winter storm and neighboring property, huge tree came down, thank you, we did anything. But. Cross my problem. But, um. It, it does, it will help provide some clarity in answering some of those questions. And along with this becomes, I, I drafted also, there's a requirement for rules and regulations. And so I drafted that as well, which is kind of, it's not part of the ordinance, it's required by the ordinance. No, you, you don't, I mean, it's a, I mean, and you're really, it's just a, it's just the rules and regulations.
Oh, it's a good answer, right, it's a good answer.
I don't want to give you ten more pages.
That's a good answer.
As a lot. She has a pretty offhand. But as their tradition. So. They open on the next agenda. For what?
The, 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 city, city council seventeen.
City councils seventeen.
Seventeen.
Another two days.
And then, uh, the next council meeting after that is the sixth. So do you want to do the ordinance meeting before the public meeting? Um, I don't think we really need to, I did get a request under other. Situations. So. That's very harsh.
There's all sorts of.
I love Rice, right, and all big for their consent. Big border.
Yes, no. Because all I did was push through, take a fall.
I know it's true.
Yes, so.
Right now it's.
The idea is good, the idea is good, I think in this, as far as reporting, good comes to be, we're going to play around it. One person cuts the block off and slides it enough to push it around, it's just time, so that's a little. Metal gadget, that matches in cars together, it was like pushing four things.
But is there, is there.
That's why I'm.
Under state statutes with regards to staff for the property.
So.
Cause those are like two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars for hard rate or.
That's more. Yeah, it's actually, it's actually more. Yeah, honestly, those were, they're, they're almost between six and seven hundred dollars.
One piece.
Nice, there was actually the. Instant.
So we've actually, so we've done this under these, a problem, we're using, or community, saying, outside of the past, this was a hearing businesses. We just don't have the staff, we just don't have the manpower, we just can't go and collect them, they're all over the place. You don't have people with a marginal vehicle to be able to collect them. Uh, and again, the problem doesn't just go on the streets, which I completely agree with, it's, it's, it makes the city look. Uh, not dirty, just, just disorganized.
Yeah.
Um, so. I, I got to the point now where I don't even bother to, cause I call them, contact them, yeah, we don't have anybody, okay, so I've been sent to tread. Uh, I can't, I just can't continue to have them scattered in my mind, I'm not going to have my guys spend six hours. Picking up cars to bring them back to their businesses.
Yeah.
Um, I just can't, so what, what, like, call them, what kind of way, I said, we've done this once, we've concerned, you know, abandoned, because I've talked to them. They won't file a lawsuit, like, if someone walks off with it, because we try to address that as well. I'm going to just make complaints, send you a question with one problem, you guys have sign to, over there, say, that you're going to prosecute them. No one holds any teeth to it, the court doesn't really pursue it either, but you won't get, the business doesn't want to bond with saying, oh, no, that was just not worth it. Um, so they're not, they're not pursuing it as victims of a marginal.
It's just part of the, just.
It, it is staying, they're, we're.
Yes, I was, I just, I guess, I was kind of going to put you here, I'd like to put a. Is there are other ordinance?
I would love to look at that. I am so excited about, you know, handling more of them, so.
Well, I think.
I, I, I would really love to put the onus on them, but unfortunately, and so. Where I am, so there is a barricade that will actually have, they're guys that are disabled and they challenge themselves. That's it, and they get lost four guys, they go out, make some cards all day, take it once, I think every other week or so. But they're not going to be protected, so those guys, and actually they have competition, if they're gathering, I talked to them, they gather usually between twenty eight and forty grocery carts and bring them back to their businesses. Which I think is great, but again, you have to have the manpower, the ability to be able to pick up and load these all at the same time. Okay, so if they're moving forward, you eat yourself, we're not even looking at how many of these cars, how many.
There, there are.
A, a language, it's almost, it's a language you own the business, yeah.
So let's look ahead for what this.
So.
It's now turn, so we'll be leaving, and I think that are you did.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, we could be, you know, we don't need to have, I don't need to have, we'd rather the turn, so.
No, I think that was the sixth.
So the seventeenth is the presentation to city council for the garbage and tree. And then the sixth, I was thinking at five thirty, we could need prior to city council. So then we could do, um, you know, like any changes, any input, um, from that meeting. Uh, for the ordinances and then see if we have the need to go to public hearing. Sounds good, and add the grocery carts, that one. Okay, grocery carts.
You're right on top of it. Good, yeah, there are a lot of grocery carts over there, and one came here for that next space. And I believe it.
We're not, we're not, we're not.
In a box.
Two boxes.
So.
And some.
And a tree that I got, I don't need.
And a tree.
That is so much fun.
All right, that's it, I guess. Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Yes, yes. Chair, talk to one, I'll tell you one about.
Regular, oh, yeah, yeah, it's right there. We're called, uh, to order a meeting with the city council on the U C N, this is a regular meeting, uh, adjourned Friday, Monday, it is. For Tuesday, January third, twenty twenty three, uh, participating in person at city hall, I have councilwoman Howard, councilwoman Liche, councilwoman. Walden and councilwoman Luet participating in the ASO, I have councilman Oliver. One, uh, before we begin meeting, we need to get in place.
United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice.
Thank you, Mr. John Breiden, I think today's agenda, uh, is to open the meeting to public, right, motion. And councilwoman Liche, in second, second, something, on there, I think most. Uh, anybody from the public. Yeah, on the quarters and the centers, moving back, I am to, uh, to take the motion to accept the regular meetings minutes from December nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
So.
Maybe councilwoman. Second, councilwoman, question or comments on the minutes? There are none. All in.
Aye.
Any votes? Uh, and I'm sent to, uh, for the regular councilman. Uh, I agree on the agenda, I would take a motion. Actually, this is a presentation. Uh, we're recording motion, uh, well, for purposes of, uh, the dialogue, I would take a motion to. I would take a motion to consider the energy, government, and renewable energy solutions auction program. Uh, interstate and rural units will opt in if we access, and then are the nets slash S A, so the program presentation, I have shot, right, motion. So. And councilwoman Howard.
Seven.
And second, councilwoman Walden, on the day of.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, um, Council, I'm Robert Ives from the, uh, Misha Logrue, I'd like to introduce, uh. Paul Misha, who's the owner of one, who will, uh, go through the presentation with you, and we appreciate your time, thank you. Yeah, my name is Paul Misha, I'm the attorney, um, of the Misha Logrue, um, I'm going to take you through the presentation, pretty high level. There's a lot of details in here, but, um, I want to make sure you have that, but I'm going to just go really high level through it. Open the questions, so, um, appropriate, uh, Misha Logrue, I, I have about twenty five years of. Um, renewable energy experience, basically, I remember we were doing solar metal rigs. Um, wind, wind projects around the country and, um, for Misha Logrue in two thousand seventeen. And we basically, we knew super nuts on solar, everything from site acquisition to pre-development, development, construction. Moving operation, all the contract, all the work, so we knew super nuts on, on solar projects. Uh, I'm here, really on behalf, and we'll talk about this, I'm sure, with the contract, but on behalf of Tree Tech Americas. They are an American subsidiary of Tree Tech, which is based in Scranton, and, um, they basically, they develop, uh, operate and own solar projects all over the world. They have about, um, forty megawatts, uh, under, um, various stages of development in Connecticut, uh, which we represent them on. Um, going to the next page, I just want to quickly, I have to quick review.
That's right.
Yes, I'm sorry. So I just want to bring your attention, there's, uh, there are federal and state incentives now that have. Been better, never been better for, to develop solar projects in Connecticut, as you, you probably know, on, on the federal level, there's the. The Inflation Reduction Act was signed recently and that, uh, the big, the big. Item in that act that helps, that helps solar is that it brought the, um, investment tax credit up thirty percent for solar. And it all, but it also added a thirty percent, uh, tax credit for interconnection costs, which is brand new. And that's a big game changer, uh, cause interconnection costs are usually the largest cost of any solar project. And plus, there's a lot of adders, the penny payments, it's an energy community or a distressed community, things like that. Uh, next slide, please. And at state level, Connecticut, in twenty twenty two, um. Connecticut codified the into law, the requirement, it was a policy, but now it's basically, it's in law now. Um, the state has to have one, uh, one hundred percent of its generation has to be from carbon free resources, uh, resource by twenty four. So all new generation coming online has to be carbon free or near carbon free. And so that has sent there's a motion, a bunch of policies, a bunch of programs at the state level, that's helping to incentivize solar. And wind and other, uh, low or no carbon, carbon, um, resources. The next slide, please. So, um, along with that act, was probably that twenty two fourteen, and that's basically why we're here today. It, um, created the, or expanded the non-residential. N R S program, I call it, but it's the non-residential renewable energy solutions program. Um, and just in this last session, they, they doubled the size of it. And, um, and just create, uh, more incentives to, to, um, to help with, uh, off, uh, larger scale solar, they expanded the size to five megawatts. Next slide, please. So I'll start again, there's not some bolt of it or more, um, so then the not, the, the N R S program, we call it for short, has a, a virtual that you do in your opponent here. And what that means is, if you're a state agricultural or municipal customer of, in your least ever source. Um, you get, those are the three entities that can participate in the program. You can, you could basically adopt a solar project for, um. Anywhere in their service territory and become the virtual offtaker, and what happens is. For every, um, account you have, for example, uh, town hall, your schools. Uh, D M P C A, and all of those accounts can be matched to a solar project. So your, your usage gets matched to the output of a solar project. And the way it works is the solar project bits, bits into the auction. And it essentially, and they bid it through the auction to get, um, to sell the energy to ever source. And for, for a town or city to participate, if you participate, you basically get, um, a share of the revenue, I call it a grant share. And in this case, it's, um, so you get a little, you get a portion, most of it goes to the system, a portion of it goes back to the, back to the city or town. And, uh, quarterly payments directly, it doesn't have anything to do with, you, you use your accounts, but, but the actual. Grant that you get through the, the bid auction goes directly to city, to the, to the city hall and for quarterly checks for ever source. And I can answer questions on that, I'm sure you'll have some more questions, uh, you'll have more, you'll have questions on that, so this is an example. And using, um, specific information from Cornington. So we pulled, uh, we were able to pull from ever source your usage, and this shows that, uh, you have about twelve million kilowatt hours. It, for the city and, um. Based, so, you know, through our client Tree Tech, we could match all your beneficial accounts, and, and under the program, we could match. Under the old program, you're going to do five accounts, now we can actually aggregate every single account in your, in, in Torren, into one big account. And if you match that to the, the solar projects, you would, um, just for, for participating and, and, and basically adopting these projects, you would get over, over the twenty year tariff. From ever source, you'd get quarterly checks, starting in year one at two hundred and thirty four thousand, and you, over twenty years, it would be, uh, almost four point five million dollars. And out of money in, into your, into the. Into your account, um. And again, the purpose of this is that it's set remote solar systems where they're, where they're, it's best development. And it's not, and then have virtual offtakers, municipal offtakers to actually take that energy. The energy actually goes into the grid, ever source puts it into their big grid, but it's virtually allocated to the city, but it. But, but I have to emphasize, the incentive, the incentive payments to you comes in quarterly payments now, it's not like the old program where it actually went to your bills. It actually is just four checks a year. Um, it's. Um, the purpose of this slide is just to emphasize is, there's no cost. Um, to the city, there's no liability whatsoever, these projects are all owned and operated by a third party. You just simply, basically for becoming the adopted offtaker, you get, you get the monies. Uh, you continue with your, it has nothing to do with your current or your procurement, where you all, you already procure from ever source or a, um. A competitive provider, that does not change, this is actually, these are actually grants that come through, uh, you still buy your power the way you normally. Um, and what's nice about this program is you get locked in, so this solar. It is different than, as you know, there's a big, it's fifty percent. Energy, you know, and distribution increase that just is hitting us, this amount, I mean, that is source territory. What's nice about our solar projects is they're locked in the twenty year prices with others, so. So it don't, there's no gas price to fluctuate or create volatility in the prices. So these are set for 20 years. And so your income would be set for 20 years. And essentially would be a hedge against, hopefully, these rising, these rising prices would help offset. But you can use the monies however you wish. So as far as next steps, we had worked, Bob, and I don't think, and through our office, we work with your legal counsel, there's a, we call it SAM agreement, which is the agreement which matches your accounts to the, to our solar projects or Treetech solar projects. And would basically create the revenue stream that in the former slide. And it just, it memorializes it into a 20-year contract. And that, I know, I think that's, that's been reviewed by the legal counsel. We, we made some changes based on the debt we got from him. And, and we have that before you today. So with that, I'm open to any questions you may have or talking more detail. I honestly have questions on.
So, I'm sorry, so any questions? And, um.
Yes, sir. To begin at the beginning here. One thing, and just from my knowledge, this is a solar program, right? I mean, over the years, we've had various people come in and present various forms of programs. Just, why is, why is an attorney presenting this? To me, to me, from the city's point of view, this is about technical specs and what the city can, how the city can lower its costs long-term by the intelligent and efficient implementation of a solar program for the city. And then in my, just again, naive, naive intent, that falls outside of the, you know, comfort zone of legal analysis of the problem.
I've been an energy attorney for 25 years.
So I'm sure you're very good attorney.
I, I help write the rules. I, I'm not an engineer, but I could pretend to be one, I think.
No, see, so how would we look for a real engineer, actually? Yeah, that's my consideration.
I understand. What we're, what we have before you here is not a system on your rooftop.
Okay.
What, we're, we're, we have projects. We have a client who has about 40 megawatts of projects that have engineers. And they're, and they're going through the regulatory process now and construction, very stages of construction. This is a incentive program for remote projects. Again, if we're not building, we're not proposing to put a solar system on your rooftop. This is another place being built. Engineers are working on it. I obviously am working on the permitting piece of it. But where it concerns the town is that it produces energy and you have usage. So we match you to that remote project. And that's the benefit of the project is that you, it doesn't burden the town with what I think you're saying, which is being worried about the engineering and building the project. It's being built.
No, um, no, like.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to follow the question. You know, where, where are the, where are they going to be built in Torrington? If they're, if you're doing this statewide, they're not in Torrington.
No.
So you're not proposing projects to be, or solar projects.
No, these are remote, under the statute, they can be placed anywhere in EverSource territory. And they're pretty much all over the state, the projects, but they're not in Torrington.
What's your relationship to EverSource? I keep hearing EverSource office. Are you a, what is your relationship to EverSource? What is the Michaud, the, my question?
Yeah, I have no relationship. They're the, they're the regulatory, they're, they are the regulated utility. You're their customer. So they, they administer the program or the statute. And that's why they're a distribution utility. So they're, everything goes through them, through public utility, where it's worked already there. That approves the program.
So I'm from the government side. I've, I've worked at the legislature for years. I worked at EverSource for 19 years in energy efficiency, et cetera. So there's, there's no relationship between our, our client, the developer, us with, with EverSource. EverSource has a managerial, program managerial duty, just like in the energy efficiency programs. I know EverSource is one of the program managers of that program. So this legislature passed this bill mandating that, that developers work with state agriculture municipalities to help share some of the, the benefits of, of building solar throughout, in, in our case today, EverSource territory and, and, you know, and in the UI territory. Those are the only two utilities in Connecticut that are eligible to participate. Customers in those utility areas. And so what we, what we're doing is, is helping our client match so that they can build projects. We match them to, to towns as, as regulated by PERO, who then gave authority to, to EverSource to manage these programs. And so what we're here to do is manage, we're, we're here to look at, we're here to offer you, you know, X percent of, of the fees for this thing for the 20 years. And so we're going from town to town so that sort of our client can build, you know, X amount.
You didn't identify yourselves.
I did when we first started. Rob Rives from Michaud Law Group. I am not aware.
Okay, so you're part of the same group.
I am.
Just a, and one more now. You are specifically working in conjunction with EverSource?
No.
So I'll slow down a little more. Okay. So what happens is utilities, and they're the distribution utilities. These are their lines. They own them, right? There goes. The program is a competitive auction. And what happens is these projects are all bid into the competitive auction. You just don't get it. You don't get the project. You have to bid in a price, right? You have a project, you get a price. I'm making numbers up here, but $12 kilowatt hour for a project. It's bid into the auction. The auction is held twice a year by EverSource, the IMLR, because it's, because these are, this is their grid. They administer the program on behalf of PUR, which was delegated to the legislature. So we bid in, the, the best bids get selected every year. We, we generally get 80 to 100% of we've won in all the bids we've submitted historically. But they, they administer it, they select, they're the, they're the ones who entered into the contract with the developers and with, for example, Torrington. So everything runs through the utility. We have no relationship with them other than we're bitter like other companies.
I have more questions. There are many people who want to, you know, jump in before answering the questions.
I think I was trying to, I think you're getting that. I think I'm getting it. But I want to kind of know how Treetech gets paid, how do they get paid? And so it's EverSource charges the customers, and some of that money goes to the people who have built these solar fields.
Yeah, so we're replacing purchasing like gas or coal jobs. So instead, they're buying clean energy, carbon-free energy from these various up to five megawatt systems. And so we get to say, EverSource, we have a system, we could sell it to you for X amount, and we think we could be better than this other system. So they, they select all the ones, they select it based on the, the program budget. And then they, so we basically enter a contract where we sell, or Treetech would sell the energy to EverSource. So then they purchase it. Instead of buying it from a coal plant, we're trying to buy it from these nuclear plants.
And so then, uh, all of these sort of best, all the tax credits that come in, which all sound great. And it seems like we would probably fit into all of the additional 10% category. So all of that savings, who gets that savings? Is that the, if you could just explain it to me? I'm trying to figure out. So those incentives.
Yeah, those incentives allow the project to bid competitively into the project. It's still, have, bid high enough to actually finance the project. And your, here, the grant, we call it grant sharing or revenue sharing, is higher than, for example, if you weren't in a distressed community. Like where we have, you know, another town that may not be in that, a distressed list, they're not getting the same amount than you.
Exactly, thank you. I'm trying to understand in terms of the 12 million kilowatts that you've identified year one, basically, explains that for all of the cities? Or is that, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We, we pulled, Bob pulled, worked with the city and pulled all your accounts. And we're, what we're able to do under the program is take your five, go back five years. And we take, we're allowed to take your highest 12 months. Because of COVID and everything, it's up and down. But we're in, so we pulled your highest usage over the last five years, 12 months. And that's 12 million. So that's all your accounts. And they're all listed in the contract.
Never, you know, we don't have any position in approving any solar projects. We know that. It's gone through two at this point. Second one. Well, the second one is on land though, and product works as well in that. But there are G projects that already exist on these. And those are the two that you're trying to run speaking. So would you be, you know, looking at true? Are you bidding this project now to other companies besides the company that's presenting? Or is this who you've vetted at this point?
The city is not the bidder. If under the old program, cities, the municipalities partner with an energy, renewable energy company to,
Yeah.
and to submit a bid under the old program. Under this program, the city's not, we're not partaking in any of the bidding process. It's the developer through the Michaud group that is submitting the bid to EverSource. EverSource receives bids from other renewable energy companies. And, and then, as he had mentioned, through the auction, they select which projects get approved. And then, once those projects get approved, then the developer then has viable project approved. They know they can sell their energy to EverSource. And then that's how best new virtual net metering program kind of works.
So I'm trying to, yeah, that is, we're, you know, we're trying to. So I, my last question is, you know, where is Connecticut DEEP? You had it in one of your bullets every three years, DEEP, you know, will provide progress and proposals.
Yeah.
So they're not actually the bidder, ever. Or they're not the.
DEEP, uh, under, a few years back, they, they changed the, the structure where DEEP actually oversees the public utilities regulatory authority, PUR. That's why DEEP's basically the boss. But they oversee PUR. But PUR actually does the regulatory review. You know, they, they, they regulate EverSource. But they, but they're overseen by DEEP. That's why that's there. The supervision.
So there's a learning curve here. I mean, they're.
No, I understand.
There's a learning curve. And a learning curve that will have implications for people who aren't, have, city council long term. We have the iron on this board, okay? This, this is long-term stuff thinking for the city. So, there, I have, I have.
So, so essentially, your group is a matchmaker for Torrington, correct? You batch us up with renewable energy. Renewable energy that EverSource has bought.
Is that what?
That they're going to buy, yeah.
Right.
From proposed projects that are under development right now.
And we don't have the choice of what group we have as our matchmakers.
We, we came forward with a proposal from our client that has, that has a great track record in about 40 megawatts of projects that we're matching to SAM. And that's how we end up.
No, so, so it's a, this isn't just a long-term. So, you know, the auction is, is trying to get to get the best price for, for new generation to replace dirty fossil fuel generation. But for the city's benefit, it's a 20-year. You, you know, the, the life, the life, well, it's 20-year program, the program is, is six over years. But the auction, six auctions. And so the, the benefit that the city of Torrington is getting is 20 years' worth of generation credits for that general checks for that 20 years of generation. And then there's another 10 years of life to the, to the solar thing. But that's not included in, in the state's program. So you have long-term, you'll have long-term cash savings that you can use on any venture that you're, that you so desire, you know, in those quarterly checks. So it's a, it's really allowing, allowing clean generation to be built. And then for that, you have to really allow the legislature, because they looked at and said, hey, what are, what are cities and municipalities getting for this? They're not getting anything. And so they put in the statute to partner us up. So we're, we're partners without legal liability, without financial liability. And so when these programs end after the, after the six auctions, there's no more money. There's, there's no money that, that we can offer Torrington. If you don't take it now, these programs expire. This offer, you know, it's not there. So the, the reason for 20 years, it's mandated by the state. You know, because our, our, our clients have to have financial viability and know that they'll be able to collect the revenue from this, you know, share the revenue with you. But they'll have revenue generating for their R line. And, and so that's why we're, we're, we're partners, but disconnected partners. And you have a financial, your, your stake is that a financial gift over, over those 20 years.
Yeah, and I think it needs to be stressed that, I mean, the industrial, the, the commercial, industrial customers are really trying hard to get into this program. It's only a, it, it's a big incentive program. And the only entities that are allowed to take advantage of it are SAM, a state agency, you know, a farm, agricultural entity or municipal. Commercial, industrial would love to be, they would, they would, you know, they, they're trying really hard to, to, through their lobbyists, to get caught into this program. But state decided for public policy reasons to leave it to these, the three public type entities or, and, plus, there.
Counselor, I have no, I have just one question.
When, when you say that, I think I heard you say, sir, that we think we can offer better prices than other bidders? Is that what I heard you say?
We're, yeah, true, yeah. So, yeah, Treetech has been highly competitive in these bids. For example, they, we bid for, I say we, but it's Treetech, my client, bid four projects, for example, on behalf of a city.
Tre.
Treetech Americas. Yeah. Treetech Americas. We bid four projects for a city of Bristol, for example. And they won all three. All our projects, it's actually four projects. There's, two are on the same site, but they're all operating, running and, and providing a stream of savings to city residents. So.
So there are, there are, we have competition in what you're offering, compared to other people that they're doing, right?
There are competitors. And the reason Treetech has been successful is because they're, what happens is Treetech's parent company, Treetech, Treetech Americas is the American subsidiary. They're based in Switzerland. And they're a distributor of, of racking panels, inverters throughout Europe. They built, I think, most of the systems in Europe. And, and they were the first in. And so what, what happens is Treetech purchases the, all the equipment from its parent company at, at cost. And they basically sell, you know, moving the product to their subsidiary. So they're aiming to do it much cheaper than your mom-and-pop type solar.
Okay.
That's why they're in that.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Look, what I am with this, sir, is there's so many moving pieces, okay? That I am not politically ignorant, okay?
That I am not politically, um, ignorant of, okay, and at this particular point, that I am in no position to support this. I would very much like to have a, in a follow-up meeting as soon as possible, a presentation from our, whoever would be our public board director. Whoever is at, at the city level in charge of this, and just lay it out for us, the city council, that's what I would like to see. A decision tree of how this whole thing breaks out, and where we, as city councilmen and representatives of the taxpayers of Torrance. Can best make the smartest decision going forward with making an appeal here, you know, and evaluating if possible.
So maybe we did this to separate, um, agenda items, is I wanted, uh, Ms. Todd to present to you what it is they do. How does this, how does this function, you know, as, you know, as the, um, middleman that's finding the municipalities with the appropriate, um. Electric use, electric means, um, that that can be matched up with, um, solar development companies that are developing arrays in our municipalities. And in some cases, even in another state, you know, how they can pull together the, you know, the match, you know, the one-one match. That then qualifies for a bid to PURA, D, um, to see if the, um, projects would be funded. The second part of this was to discuss how does this affect the city of Torrance, you know, specifically? In a contract, what would that look like? And, uh, Jamie Secora, who is our facilities director, who is well-versed in, um, this type of energy exchange. We don't change anything, we're still purchasing our energy from Eversource, we're not changing how we conduct business and, um, in purchasing the energy. It's just our use gets used to, um, support or offset, um, this, this change from fossil fuel-driven energy to clean energy such as solar. So, um, before we decide that we're in a position to make a decision, I, I think we move into the next set of agenda discussion. And allow Jamie an opportunity to explain this probably in my instance.
Okay.
And then take your phone there. But, um, is there anything else that you think that you can try to?
Now, the last one to add is that we, we've had, I didn't mention, we, we've had several meetings with, with, um, staff on this. I, I understand it's my, our first time here, but we, we've been meeting.
For seven months.
Yeah, going over this program, so for that may have.
And I, I think that the only thing that I would add is, because I'm right there with you, this is, there's a steep learning curve in understanding, you know, this. Uh, so many times the state mandates, you know, you know, you can only use, you know, or disperse this much nitrogen into our water. You know, you can only get this much energy from fossil fuels, you know? When we start mandating and capping things, it becomes this little cap and trade, and then look at this as a solar cap and trade.
Well, I have, I have, I have so much concern, yeah, yes, so do I, and that's what I want is, I want to have the time to sit down, talk among federal councilmen and, 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 you know, our local experts.
Yeah.
Think this through.
Specifically to the city and how it impacts us, so that's globally, how does this work? How do these, you know, how do these, um, deals, um, work? And most specifically, and, and I, the fingers are not numbered, but just as a reminder, this is the state issuing our mandate. You know, how many times as a municipality are we saddled with.
Yeah.
Trying to, you know, trying to, uh, help the state achieve its goals, you know, you look at solid waste holes, you know, you look at, you know, the state says we're establishing this mandate. You know, we're going to monitor this, and every three years, we're going to measure it, and we're going to tell you are you meeting the goal? Are you following short the goal, you know, and what are the, you know, what are the punitive measures if you're following short? So, we want to come to the table prepared to, um, do a permanent solution. Um, this is a K proposal, um, and then Jamie can talk to you specifically.
Thank you. And just in closing, this, this is, this is one of those mandates that's not an unfunded mandate. We're looking to fund you through a mandate that you're, that you're being, so thank you, Mayor, Council.
And to that end, you know, that, that funding, now again, this doesn't change where we get our energy from, we are still Eversource customers. Our energy is still coming from the same place, um, or being purchased from Eversource. Eversource is the one that has to purchase their energy from some other, um, source. But this page, when they talk about, uh, what comes to the city based on our kilowatt, um, hours. Or, uh, I mean, yeah, over twenty years, forty million dollars, I mean, that's a form of the check, you know, that's not a credit against, um, a bill. That is a, a physical check that is delivered to the city that is considered revenue, that really goes through the cash, you know? It can be used for anything, you know, operating expenses. Logic says we should use it for something that is energy-related, you know, that offsets, you know, some upgrades in our, um, in our infrastructure, lighting or anything like that. But, um, the, uh, that's the benefit, I think, would be best of Jamie could come up with.
But these numbers are fair to them, this is, um, the Michaud's estimation of, of their proposal, correct?
Um.
Discussions.
Yeah, and Jamie can speak for her time, yes.
Yeah, you're saying.
Okay.
So other people, you know, if you understand.
So, um, going on with the presentation, unless there are other questions for Ms. Todd?
I think so, sure, I don't think so, but the answer, um, the law, is the, is the requirement to reduce the greenhouse gases, and, but this has this requirement of the Act concerning Climate Education. Who is it mandated on, is it to the electric companies that they need to get their stuff from somewhere else? Or is there like part of the law that's required on us?
It's, it's, it's on generation itself, and, and utilities basically, because.
Basically, utility companies is the requirement, so they need this to happen, right?
Yeah, they, they can't, they, they have to buy by twenty forty, a hundred percent of the energy of, of the power has to come from carbon grid.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so before I open the microphone for Jamie, I, I think just so that we can continue to control the, uh, conversation, I would like to enter change of motion. Now, this is for discussion purposes, I'll let you take a motion to, guess I have a side right there?
Sure.
Uh, I'll let you take a motion, I see, yeah.
That's not using.
Wait, no.
To accept, thank you, and I'll let everyone, uh, hold on a second, I'm going to correct, um, uh, I won't call them much of yet. We'll, um, open it up to discussion, Jamie, if you want to talk a little bit about this.
Yeah, Jamie Secora, Facilities Manager, so first off, this is not to buy solar. So it's not the past previous agreements that you were talking about, a lot of that was, um, to purchase solar, they were producing somewhere here.
Right.
This is the, the best way I can explain this in layman's terms is Eversource used to have a program called Demand Response. So for ABC manufacturing that, you know, uses so much energy in the middle of the summer when it's going to be super high usage. Eversource used to have a program where they would link up with said ABC manufacturing, set aside that when we have a big usage day, we're going to call you. We're going to start your generator, which is either some kind of fossil fuel, propane, gas, diesel, natural gas. You're going to run your generator, we know you're going to take X amount of load off of the grid during that high time. That's over and done with, because there's no way to do that without using some kind of fossil fuel, or Eversource is pushing for a hundred percent carbon neutrality. This is kind of a new way you're doing that, you have all these companies that are trying to put up solar fields to sell energy to Eversource. So the way they're regulating that is it's opened up to SAM, state, ag, or union only, so for anybody, what's that? Yeah, sorry, um, so before they're going to let these third-party companies put up solar fields, that your idea on this program is, fine, we'll let you do that. As long as you can find a customer that uses the energy you're saying you're going to make. So if they put in a ten-megawatt, two-five-megawatt solar fields anywhere within you, um, Eversource. So they can put it in Torrance, they can put it in Stanford, they can't put it in New Haven, because that's your local load. Yep, so if you want to put in ten megawatts, find a customer that uses at least ten megawatts. So we know that it's offset by some customer somewhere, thus the virtual net metering. So it came to us, we use twelve, so they can put in two-five-megawatt fields, it's going to maximize by producing ten megawatts. They're going to sell that through a big process of, we'll sell it to Eversource at X cents a KWH. Eversource will pay them, by paying them, we get the money, that's what they're keeping it legit and honest. So for every quarter, when they sell energy, as long as we use what we're saying we're using, and it produces this, we get paid. So it's similar to what it was on Demand Response, where if you use it or not, a customer got paid just for signing up for Demand Response, this is kind of the same thing. So skin of the game for us is really nothing, as long as we keep using energy, which we are, then we're going to get paid every quarter based on what some solar field somewhere in Connecticut is going to produce.
And, but was it determination that this group, the Michaud group, is doing this better and smarter than other, um, middlemen? You're getting better, you, you know what I'm saying? That we like, why are we more developed as opposed to another group that's doing this where it will cost us less?
It doesn't cost us anything.
Well, we give more back than we put down, right?
Because it's all going to come, it's all going to come down to whoever wins the bid, so that's a part of it, we have no real say in it. This is just a company that reached out to us and said, hey, we can marry you up with somebody, so there's no legwork on our part whatsoever. So I could go out and ask a thousand other companies to try and do this, but then you're going to just go on. So the first bid is already coming out, there's only five more total, and then this program's done. So then you could miss the entire boat, and who knows what's going to happen that far out. So this is kind of somewhat time-sensitive to be able to lock in and get into something where we can start to generate free money. Where if something happens on the solar field, they fix it, we don't.
Well, the business, I get you, so, so I, I guess I'm, so I'm asking you now, I'm not asking Michaud, you representing city of Torrance, taxpayers of Torrance. I mean, we've all been, it's still bidding for, you know, it's bidding for a product in, in a sense, and.
It is and it isn't, I totally understand your question.
What is this? Well, then understand this. Our, 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 our basic rule of thumb here is that when we go up for bid on a project, we want to get lowest bidder, right? This is not lowest bidder, this is better, the best return on what we're.
It, it is, it is in a way lowest bidder. Eversource is not going to pay somebody twenty cents a KW if they're bidding twelve cents a KW.
But isn't there, yeah, but there are other people, other middlemen out there, right? Them that are offering the same thing they're offering?
I haven't found any.
True.
I haven't found any, nobody's come forward, even brought it up.
Really?
This is a new, this program here is new for, for this year.
So there's a way of making money. That's got.
There's a ton of layers.
You're expanding only one, there's only one provider that's taking.
That, I know, there's only one provider, nobody else has come forward, they reached out to me through relationships that we've had with Eversource.
I just find it hard to believe that there isn't.
But as for the, the bidding process, again, Eversource is going to go with the lower number in the whole bid. So the benefit to them is they have a track record of being lowest bidder and still producing a profit. So if it's going to cost you ten cents a kilowatt hour to produce your solar fields, what are you going to sell it to for Eversource? If you sell it for eleven, you're only making one cent on your return. We are getting a portion of that return, so them being more profitable nets us more money with no skin of the game.
So when you say, I'm sorry.
Go on.
So it's time limited, so if we don't take the opportunity as a municipality, uh, within one timeframe, you said it's a short timeframe?
There's six bids remaining, it's two years, so it's three years. Then, then this program closes, and holds a debate as you come up with maybe a newer program. But that's always up in the air, every year, something changes with Eversource and how we use it.
Or legislative terms, or passed.
Correct, yes.
And then basically the state is managing our, how we use our energy. And, and from what I understand, in twenty forty, they want us basically zero carbon, they want to offer it, so.
Correct, they don't want to be using, um, oil, coal, or, you know, propane or natural gas to generate energy. They want a hundred percent something else, solar, wind.
Yeah, so the state's basically, you're right, so you, you know, it does sort of have the monopoly, that solar would have the monopoly on any other alternative energy.
Cost-wise right now, yes.
And, and that's basically the decision on the state when they made this statute.
Correct, and this is all backed by deep and PURA and the whole line, so it's overseeing above Eversource. Deepest kind of the thing.
Not that I go across the state, but, well, I feel like they ruled out any other alternative energy that might come forth with the better state. I know nothing about this world, other than, you know, I see the four million dollars in twenty years, um, which, what's the risk of us not taking this opportunity sooner rather than later?
Not getting money, that's the risk, it, it could get worse, it could go away, not come back. I mean, there's things right now where you're talking about removing incentives, eventually you're very near on LED lighting. Because it's been around enough that it's shame on you if you haven't jumped on it yet.
Right.
So revenues I was able to capitalize on this year for the city are severely cut in half, are gone next year, meaning already this year, twenty twenty-three.
And a little, I know about what you worked, and then doing a great job in terms of looking at where we can have more efficiency in certain, certain instances, so, um, thank you, I don't have any questions.
Just on the wrong, I'm sure there are all questions.
Yeah.
We're, we're getting there. And, um, well, one question as it relates to the law, and just kind of goes to what Councilwoman Robert was saying, this doesn't mandate that we use solar. Like, if there was a cost-effective way to use wind, and that could be in the running for these types of changes.
This doesn't mandate we use anything, alls we're saying on this is, we use X, they're going to produce X. We, yeah, we could put in a coal plant tomorrow if we were able to, and produce our own energy, and it doesn't affect whatever they're doing.
Whatever, I, yeah, I was really asking like what the law means, which I know is not necessarily your burden, but I'm just kind of curious, I'm thinking you could do something else. It's just that nothing else is cost-effective just yet to be able to bid to the electric company.
Correct, I don't think there's a lot of people trying to push wind farms in Connecticut right now.
No, I know the location, I'm not exactly used to that. Um, if we were to pass, we were to sign up for this tonight, when does year one start for us? Is it twenty twenty-three, or is it?
That starts, um, yeah, the bid is, when is this bid due, this is.
February.
February, so first bid, they would submit the bid on behalf of all this in February, and then you wait, what is it, three months probably, or?
By August, contracts are sent.
Yeah, so there's, there's a time delay in this anyway, so this would not be signed today, they're starting tomorrow, they still have a lot of legwork to do to submit everything, to then get it approved in the bid.
And so need to run it then.
Correct.
Because the, the manager's mentioned, and I, I was forgetting that point, that really we're, if you're signing on with you, this is really, they still have to get the bid, this might not actually happen.
Correct, so this is just really the approval to say, sign this, see if they get the bid, if after X amount of times it doesn't, this all is dead. And it's written in the contract that way, um, all the changes, Vic, you and I went over, we're, we're just, so we had to change the contract to match what, you know, we felt comfortable with as a city. For that.
And Jamie, um, when you were bringing this to my office, you mentioned that if we don't hit any of the marks that are on the sheet, you know, we're not, we're not utilizing this much, much energy. Then we're not getting these checks, you know?
We're going to get less, if we use less, we get less.
Right, so nothing really changes with the city's, uh, energy use. We're still, at Eversource customers, we're still trying to find ways to reduce our energy use.
Correct.
Um, but this is a company prepared to do dispatch making, you know, kilowatt hour for kilowatt hour. And put in a bid to the state so that they can, um, help these solar array developers develop their solar arrays.
Correct, yeah, we, we still buy our energy for conservation energy for the whole city, that's not going to change. Um, where we buy it from, that is coming up in, ends in twenty twenty-three. So we're going to have to go back out to bid where we're going to purchase our power from anyway in twenty twenty-four. So we're even worse than trying to square that, and it's nothing to do with this, this is just essentially the modern green demand response, if you will. Of all these people wanting to put up solar fields and sell back to Eversource, Eversource has known until you can marry it up with a customer. Otherwise, there'd be solar fields, every empty grass field you could find. So this is a way to kind of control it and marry it up, which is why it's only available to state agricultural municipality, they've not opened this up to private business. Anyways, private business would jump on it.
Yeah, and I think that, if I may, to the council members, you know, when we think about, um, the project that, you know, when the Catholic Church is taking, uh, some of their properties. And they're saying to the solar companies, yeah, go ahead, but, but put up an array, and the solar companies paying the Catholic Church for the land, you know, and selling the energy to Eversource. But the state is saying is, there's a way for us to, you know, better control all of this, so that there, that we're. Again, to the point made earlier by Councilwoman Luette, when the state council is approving these solar arrays, taking advantage of municipalities' chance to do so. This is a, this is a way for them to better control how many of these solar arrays should be put in. And are they matching their kilowatt production to the actual kilowatts that are being used by the state, by municipality, by, um, farmers? That's what this program is all about. Otherwise, you know what, we are, we're going to see every bit of, you know, excess acreage, you know, get consumed by solar arrays. It's, it's a way, I think, for the state to control how these arrays are being approved, and making sure that there's a benefit to the residents of the state.
So otherwise, you're, you're, you're right, Paul, people come out, we want to put in solar and sell it to you, and that's not what this is, because that, I think. Because that, I think, is way more risky, we're taking on a certain amount of risk to do that. Or if they could reach out and say, you know, you wanna put in your own solar, then we own it, something happens, we're fixing it. This, we're not married to it at all. They could put it, like I said, they could put it in Stanford, or they could put it in Denver, it doesn't matter where their field goes, it's just as long as it's in Eversource territory, so they know, we put in something that can generate up to X. And we're showing you that we have a customer that signed on and said, yeah, we use about that. I'd love it if we use less, because that means we're saving within the city.
Dude, where are they actually installing the arrays? Who's making that final decision? How is that?
That's between the regulatory and, um, the other company. Yeah, and try, yeah. So we have no say in it, this is just basically us claiming, what do you use for energy? Here's our bills, this is what we use, okay?
Okay, I do get that, get that, I'm just thinking.
The solar is not going in Torrance, and I can tell you that.
Well, yeah. The state, uh, this is my personal opinion, the state likes to utilize Torrance a lot of things, then, uh, if we had our own discretionary, we would not approve. So, um, there is no connection here between approving this and then opening the door for the state to come in, putting solar arrays in Torrance that will be used in, uh, Goshen, Arlington.
No, if, if anything, another third party could go to Bristol or to Danbury and say, we wanna do this program with you. And then they could fight to put a solar field in Torrance, and we have no say in that, to bring it on private property, it's nothing to do with us. Just like wherever they're gonna build their solar, has nothing to do with us, we're just saying, we're a customer, we use this, you're gonna produce this, we're a match. That's all it really is, but no, in no way do I believe this at all, in a way for the state to open the door to come in and do something like that, this has nothing to do with that. This is just us claiming that this is what you use, we don't plan on, you know, as rates are going up and up and up, this is gonna help offset, you know, new costs. As come twenty twenty-four, it's gonna be skyrocketing pricing.
So where, in, in Connecticut, where's Michelle, Michelle? Where's that group, where you made deals, what cities? In Connecticut? Uh, what cities, what municipalities in Connecticut are, have you made deals with?
Um, we, uh, the biggest, right, so far, is city of Bristol, those are actually not already, city of Bristol. And, um, I said, are you asking these kind of, these kinds of agreements?
Yes.
Yeah, um, actually, we're working with several cities, um.
What's finalized, the deals been finalized in Bristol, other places?
We're the same, um, I don't know if I should mention.
So I, I'm, I'm not really sure that we should publicly disclose the cities that we're in, because it's.
There are several.
But you can disclose ones that you have.
It's, it's already operational, so Bristol, it's public record, it's operational, um, Bristol is making substantial amount of savings from, from the program that they're in, the net sales being. But we have, we have projects that we're looking, our, our client has projects that they're looking to build, and we're looking to match those with, with multiple municipalities. And we're on, we're on verge with four or five different agreements, um, for this upcoming auction. So again, we need to fill buckets for every auction coming up with municipals, municipality.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, and it's, um, it's new to me, and anyway, so you only have the one, that's Bristol. Bristol's unique, because I worked there for a year, that ESPN, I would assume, I know, that energy load is incredible, so, um. It's, that's not the same, so what I'm saying is that full, energy footprint, I, I assume, I, you know.
But, yeah, please, I know where you're going.
You're right, they're, they have, they have a pretty big load, so, yeah, they've, um, they have several projects. They have, they would have for triple what you're making.
So, again, are other middlemen making deals, are other cities in Connecticut, I mean, for this, are other cities in Connecticut confirming, um, signing deals to do the same thing?
Yes, yes.
So that would be with a different group, that's Michelle group, but a different group.
We are probably the most successful at it. One, we do large buildup, the program, this is the, this second bid of the program, so there's not a lot of history. The prior, prior to this was, was V and M, so this twenty twenty-three, the, the February auction is the second auction of this program. So last year was a learning year, because it was a brand-new program, new program rules, a lot of technical sessions with, with Pura and Deep, et cetera. So this is the first really full year of everybody understanding the program. But it's track record, how many projects are you building, how successful are you at, at bidding? And, you know, I, I spent nineteen years at Eversource, and, and this is a personal story of me, that, the history of the Michoacan law group, you know. I wasn't looking for a correction, I came over here because of the success rate of them building projects, and, and the track record is there. So when we say we're, we're bidding on, you know, on these projects, our client is bidding to win, to build, so that they can earn, or, or, the return on investment, and you can, you're, earn a return on their investment as well.
Other questions? I, I, I have a, yeah, one time clarifying question, um, because, yeah, right there. Councilman Caffetter asked who you made an agreement with, and you may not be able to disclose everybody, but you, when speaking about Bristol. They have an agreement where you've actually built a project on their, in, in their city, so that's sort of like a different degree than we're talking about here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um. This is, they're both virtual net metering, but the old virtual net metering program sunsetted. So they were, they were, they went in under the final year of the old program, this is a brand-new program. We only had one auction so far, and I think two companies, one of them was pre-tech, submitted into that auction, it's so brand-new.
And, and the solar fields were not built just in Bristol, so there, there are multiple solar projects that were built on their behalf. So they're gaining revenue from multiple sites in eastern Connecticut, in Litchfield County, um, in Bristol itself.
Yeah, and I can tell you, there was two in Bafalam, one on another project in Patna, and one more, um.
In Bristol?
Yeah, in, in, in Bristol, I want.
So the city of Bristol is, I mean, getting savings from places in all of those locations.
Correct, correct.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
I have a request to move the motion. So. Call this motion, uh, and just read it into the record because it did get short-stripped in here. So what I'm looking for is, uh, a vote by the city council to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager and public works director. To authorize a mayor to act early, have the city to sign the MRS slash SANA solar program service agreement. Based on a detailed proposal and presentation by Michelle LaFleur. That was the motion, I'll call it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes?
I'm gonna pause now, just because I, I still have my time to think this thing through, and I would love to have a very, talk to some people outside of this room. And since I can't, I'm gonna put you, so putting down is enough.
Right, and I'm sorry, um, even a day.
He's like.
Sorry, my, my, yeah, my, my sound keeps cutting out, and I don't mean to be a pest, I'm sorry about that, but I have an obligation I need to be home for. Um, but with that said, I will vote against this, and I'll explain to the council why later.
All right, so two in favor, I excuse me, four in favor, two against, the motion carries. Um, but this isn't the end of this, you know, we'll continue to have this conversation, because I agree with all of the council members. There is a steep learning curve in understanding how our energy is, um, generated. How are we being a part of the solution to, um, the state's goals to achieving, you know, this, this, uh, energy generation neutrality? Um, and then how is the city going to play a role in any of that? I, I think it's an important discussion.
I know, and I, I just, you know, by voting to do this and move forward, you'll be, in some ways, you kind of have hands for what we needed, but that's why I voted.
All right, so we'll move on, I have a five, uh, motion to reappoint Jessica Mattes and Jessica White as regular members of the General Health District for three-year term set to expire January tenth, twenty twenty-five. Council?
Sorry.
Are there questions or comments on the appointments? One motion, one in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, motion carries? I have the, I want to do a motion to reappoint Ellen as a regular member of the General Health District for three-year term set to expire January twenty twenty-six. I will, I think I saw from the right. Second, second by Councilwoman Horner. Are there questions on this appointment? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, motion carries? And six, I want to do a motion, uh, I would recommend it from the Small Cities Committee to authorize project approval for the Billwell Builders Admiralty of Margaret for that kit. For twenty-five thousand five million dollars for the paint mitigation, of the coal upgrades, new entry-to-assembly placement in the heating system, and plumbing repairs at two thirty at that avenue.
So.
Thank you, Councilman. Second, and second by Councilwoman Horner. Uh, and the floors, or are there any, uh, other small cities?
Yes. Yeah, Small Cities Committee, that, for the meeting here, and, uh, this is a, uh, second project, or phase two of a project that started last year. Now, we had a roofing chapter, and, uh, so there's a limit from the Small Cities, uh, thirty-five thousand hours, so we were still knowledgeable for the twenty-five, five, I thought it was twenty-five four. Uh, for the remaining things, uh, there's virtually no, uh, lanes in Sepulvede, uh, sets at one hundred and eighteen thousand. And the only lane was for the roof that was done in the spring. So I would recommend that we approve it.
Oh, Councilman, other questions or comments? Here, you know, call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? And seven, I want to do a motion to accept the mayor's appointment of Francis Baba to be cable television advisor counsel. To serve as a representative for twenty-two, for two years, set to expire July one, twenty twenty-four.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walter, and second by Councilwoman Caffetter. Uh, questions or comments on the appointment?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
As, as far as the, um, what was one of the, what was the, um, items to put some sort of monitoring here to, to monitor meetings for? Cable, they, to, to hallucinate them, so.
That sounds, so, yes, so, um, a total upgrade of all of this, and, so, Ray, do you want to answer that question, please?
I was gonna pawn that one off on Jamie too, because that's his project.
Yeah. Uh, so we did, we did move on from bid, we had the bid through. Right now, the contractor is on more social security, is procuring the equipment, so. But, uh, a good portion of the equipment has been arrived here, it's currently in storage behind us. Um, so we're anticipating very shortly that they will begin construction, and think they wanna start the, the Martin Luther King. They wanna start the upgrade to, yeah. You know, because I ask, I, I just, I, I, I was sure the answer would be yes, but does Francis Baba, he's in, he's working with you on this? I mean, he would be.
No. No, so the cable advisory committee is a committee that works with, uh, Optimum.
Yeah.
Uh, Altis, it's a committee separate and apart from a municipal, um, committee that reviews, you know, what are, what are they doing to meet the community needs? Um, providing local access to news, entirely different.
Correct.
Um, but if I'm reading between the lines in your question, you know, what are we doing to make our meetings more accessible to the public? For viewing, whether it's on cable network or whatever, you know, and with live streaming being the, or, I mean, that was your job. You know, this, um, live streaming, I think, has nothing to do with cable, and is probably the way of the future, just making the.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments on this appointment? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I have eight, um, to the motion. To approve the point of Adrian and Bobby and Joe Gattini as regular members of the Department of Customs Commission for a partial term set to expire as of November five, twenty twenty-five.
Oh. Sorry.
Uh, questions? Any votes? Motion carries?
Aye.
And nine, uh, I want to do a motion to release the means listed in Corporation Council's number one, fifth, January third, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Second, second by Councilwoman Horner, questions or comments? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, motion carries?
Aye.
I want to do a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector, authorized tax refunds, given the stage, uh, January third, twenty twenty-three.
So.
All in favor, and second by Councilwoman, have your own, uh, questions, please? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye.
I have a, I want to do a motion to consider business by Department heads. So, thank you, Councilwoman White.
Sorry.
Second by Councilwoman Walter, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Uh, Ray, still?
Nothing, thank you.
Any other questions? Question, council?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor.
We'll do that, I want to do a motion to consider business by the members, so, thank you, Councilwoman White. Second, second by Councilwoman Horner, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye.
Start, we'll start at the, um, the phrase, Councilman Oliver, anything this week?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Walter?
Uh, nothing, thank you, Mayor, thanks.
Councilwoman Horner?
No, I have nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Nigia?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman White?
Well, I wanted to acknowledge, um, the passing of Nina McQuire, which, those of us who have been involved with local politics, um. You know, has been active since the years of Governor Meskell. It was quite a shot to learn that she, um, recently, you know, ran, um, a good public, um, advocate, you know, whatever party she, you know what party she represented, but, you know, we're proud to have her as part of, um. Really done, um, state politics period, so, um, starting, uh, here about the passing, and, um, yeah, the areas.
Thank you, Councilman Caffetter.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
All right, then, Councilwoman, I have thirteen, I want to do a motion to open the meeting to the public. Uh, for comments, thank you, Councilwoman Caffetter. Second, second by Councilwoman Nina, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, we're hoping to the public. Any comment on agenda items? So you hear none, we die in fourteen, there'll be no other business, I'm waiting for, I want to do a motion for general.
So.
Councilwoman Walter, and second by Councilwoman Nigia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?